Good morning, this is Southampton Town Supervisor Jay Schneiderman. I'd like to call to order this work session of the Southampton Town Board on this ninth day of July 2020. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, Pledge of Allegiance.
I declare the United States of America and to the Republic where which we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Sunday, would you call the roll?
Supervisor Schneiderman.
Here.
Councilwoman Laustad.
Here.
Councilman Martel.
Here.
Councilman Bouvier.
Here.
Councilman Skivoni.
Present.
All right, thank you. And the Governor has extended the suspension of open meetings law requirements, some of the requirements that are allowing us to continue to meet via Zoom technology on the Internet. We'll continue to have the regular town board meetings though in person using the hybrid model, and we'll continue to try to do these work sessions by using the Internet. We don't have a big agenda today. We're going to review the draft agenda for the July 14th meeting, and then we do have executive session. But before we get into reviewing the agenda, it's become customary to get an update during these meetings from our Public Safety Director Ryan Murphy, who's been very busy trying to keep up with all the changes. We are now in Phase Four, and there are some changes that go with that, and I'll let Ryan sort of talk about where we are today. Ryan?
Yep, thanks Supervisor. As of yesterday, we did enter Phase Four as you indicated. You also had indicated the extension of the suspension for the in-person requirement for open meetings law. That was extended as of about 48 hours ago and runs through till August 6th now, I believe. As far as the Phase Four, we see an increase, probably the most notable increase to members of the general public will be the ability for non-essential gatherings to go up to 50 people in size. We went from 10 to 25, so now we're at 50 people for any kind of non-essential gatherings. Other things that folks will start to notice is some low-risk outdoor and indoor entertainment, but predominantly, you know, outdoor in the way of some additional sports activities, fitness-type activities being allowed to start to occur. Entertainment spaces, so outdoor, there's going to be limitations for some of our art centers and things like that. The limitations for outdoor space are 33% of the normal capacity, and indoor spaces, it's 25% of the normal capacity. We're working with any of those venues that don't typically have a capacity rating for their outdoor spaces to help them to make that determination of what they can safely hold out there in conformance with the executive orders. Outside of that, you know, we're feeling a lot of, we're feeling a lot of questions right now from local area businesses that are trying to operate that still don't fall into a Phase Four category, particularly things like gyms. This is having a huge impact on them. They still have to have their doors closed, so working with them as best as possible to try and reopen, reopen in some capacity, allow them to make use of some outdoor space, similarly to the emergency relief that we're providing to a lot of our restaurants in the town to be able to use some of their outdoor spaces. I think that's the best kind of quick summary of what's going on. There's additional allowances now for some higher education and a couple of other areas under Phase Four. There's talk that malls as of Friday will be allowed to open, but the guidance as far as HVAC requirements for them, I think, was still pending as of yesterday evening. But that's kind of the quick rundown of where we're at right now.
Ryan, how did we make out over July 4th weekend? A lot of people obviously were in town. In terms of compliance with the rules at our restaurants and retail and everywhere else, how was the weekend? How did we manage the weekend?
We had code enforcement and bar marshals out for July 4th weekend, and I really didn't get any reports of any significant problems from my folks. I don't know that we even had to issue any real notices of violation, even on the commercial side. On the residential side, there were some parties. Police and code enforcement responded to some gatherings that were well in excess of what the limitations were. I believe notices of violation were served on several properties. Some of them are rentals, some of them were homeowners that were having large family gathering parties, but it was still in excess of the, at the time, 25-person limit, so they were advised accordingly and asked to break things up. We had some normal, you know, noise complaints and things of that nature as well. Overall, I would say the weekend went well, based on the conditions that we're faced with right now. I don't think there was anything unexpected that occurred. We anticipated that we were probably going to see people stretching the limits a little bit more. Folks have been cooped up for a long time now. It was a beautiful weekend. We expected that we would probably see some people taking liberties during the weekend, and that's what we saw, and we addressed each of those issues as they came up. But I would compliment our businesses for by and large being in compliance with the orders throughout the weekend, that they really didn't cause us much in the way of problems. Any issues were more residential, I think, than commercial.
What about the beaches? How did we fare at the beaches?
To my knowledge, I think that we were busy, but everything was handled fine. What we are seeing is, as a result of the continued restrictions on, you know, restaurants and in-person dining, and even some of the outdoor challenges that some of the facilities face, and the encouragement for people to do takeaway, we are still seeing a lot of garbage at beach garbage locations, at the trash cans. I had a conversation with Kristen about that yesterday. We've since installed some of the Big Belly cans, so I think that will alleviate some of the issues. But people are taking their food to go, going down to the beautiful setting of the beach, and then disposing of the garbage. So we still see, even around dinnertime, this late day kind of rush on the garbage cans, which causes a little bit of overflow. Otherwise, you know, visitors to the beach, beachgoers, I didn't hear any issues with that this past weekend. If they were, if there were any issues, they were minimal and handled very locally before it escalated to a level that it had to get brought anybody's attention.
We did reach 50% capacity at three of the beaches, so we had to start turning some people away. But we, you know, when people left, they were able to come in if they waited, so.
Yes, they were doing, I believe at one or two of the beaches, they were doing one-in-one-out type scenario where they continued to let people in as people departed.
And I think we're now selling day passes during the week at a couple of the beaches.
Yes.
So I think that has started, but not during the weekend and not at every, not everywhere that we normally sell day passes. There was another issue I wanted to ask you about. Oh yeah, litter, you mentioned litter. Were we able to get a second litter crew up?
We've got two crews out right now. We started our second crew as of Monday, so we have two-person crews out running around the town, five days a week right now.
Yeah, I think you raised an interesting point, that because of the restaurants are all takeout, or largely takeout, you're getting a lot more containers, plastic forks, straws, all these things. People are taking them rather than eating indoors, they're taking them to the beach and eating. And so we're seeing an increase in sort of those fast-food container-type of litter.
Yeah, and we've observed a particularly high volume of usage and associated garbage at Long Beach and Wildwood. Those areas have been heavily trafficked lately, and so the TLC crews have been working in coordination with parks to supplement normal park efforts in those areas to try and make sure we have it cleaned up.
And I did talk to Kristen about the Big Bellies going in at Long Beach, and, you know, she reported too, you know, with the signage and the video cameras, that the parks' employees reported getting there in the morning and not seeing the typical garbage strewn around the garbage containers anymore. So that's, that's good. That's having a positive.
Yeah, she also, yeah, she also communicated some of the issues to myself and Chief Skrenicki to see if we could up the evening controls in those areas, particularly on the PD side as a deterrent for anybody dumping household waste.
Okay. And in terms of the numbers of people with coronavirus, I spoke, you were on the call with Southampton Hospital on Monday. They were down to one patient was not in the ICU unit, just a regular hospital bed, and one patient with COVID. So it was only a few weeks ago that that number was 50, so that's a, that's a big drop. We're hoping it's zero soon. I noticed, you know, the countywide, there was some 50 people hospitalized with COVID countywide. Yesterday's numbers included zero fatalities. That's about the third time or fourth time in the last week where the county reported zero fatalities. That's good news. Obviously, we want that every day. You know, some days there's one or two. It used to be quite.
Yeah, Amber.
Yeah, and so the numbers are definitely.
Number four, about two.
Numbers are definitely better. That doesn't mean we should let our guard down. It means that what we're doing is working, keep it up. So, and I know now restaurants are allowed indoor seating, I think, what, at 50%?
50% capacity for indoor still, yes. They got that in Phase Three and stayed 50%. That was, I had put out a, I put out an email to several departments and all of my staff the other day and shared with PD, because as we advanced into Phase Four, I anticipated that some folks might think that their capacity numbers were going to go up, and that's not, that's not one of the things that's happening yet.
But places, museums can now open, like Power Sharp Museum, Madu, all the indoor spaces, the Wailing Museum out in Sag Harbor, the indoor areas can open now.
Yeah, that's correct.
But there's guidance on everything, so you got it. They can open, but there's a but. They got to go check all the little.
Yeah, they can open, but they have to have a plan, and they have to certify that they've, that they've got the plan and that they've read the guidance. So it's similar to when retail was allowed to open. They had to have a plan, they had to certify that they had the plan. All these places have to do the same thing.
All right, let me, let me turn it over to the board. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Murphy?
I just a comment that the arts institutions in Southampton Town have been working on their opening plans for, for several weeks now, so I'm sure that they are in place. And Ryan, I have a question. Given the uptick in infections nationwide, is there concern on the state level that that could have an effect in New York on our infections?
Well, yes, there definitely is.
I mean, obviously, right, yeah. We need to be vigilant like the Supervisor says.
Yeah, that, I think that's, I think that's part of the reason that we're seeing, obviously it's the reason that we're seeing a mandatory quarantine for travelers from certain identified areas. It's also probably why we didn't see an increase to, you know, restaurant indoor capacities and things like that. If everything was decreasing or holding stable throughout the country, I think that there would be a much more optimistic attitude, and maybe we would have gone from, you know, 50 to 75%. But in order to maintain our levels and, and not open ourselves up too much where people are going to come flooding in, I think that's why we're holding on to some of the restrictions that we're seeing right now.
Right, thank you.
So we have two updates too from parks. We have the concerts in the park at Good Ground Park, the last two in July have been canceled, so the first one, if possible, will be August 6th. And as of yesterday, youth sports in the town and the Parks Department has started to issue the permits for the end of July and August for youth sports to get going again. Yeah, I guess that part of Phase Four was some limited outdoor sporting activities, right? Recreation? Exactly. We just have to limit crowd size, that's all. Yeah, no spectators, right? Or something? No, that's.
That would be the best.
Yeah. Ryan?
Yeah, and we were working, we're working with SYS too, to open up some of their things.
Oh, great. The indoor spaces, huh? Anyone else for Ryan? All right, thank you, Ryan. Keep it up.
You're welcome.
And we'll talk to you soon. All right, so board, let's go to reviewing the agenda for the July 14th meeting. And you should have both a resolution packet and some potential add-ons. So let's go through the packet first, and then we'll, we'll consider adding on a couple things to it. All right, so this is going to be for a town board meeting July 14th. That's next Tuesday. We're going to do, it's going to be an afternoon meeting, 1 o'clock, and we're going to do it at the Town Board Meeting Room. And you can come in in person, or I guess we can have you come in via video conferencing. I prefer if you came in, obviously. And the public can also watch via video conferencing, but we also are accepting appointments for the limited number of seats that we have at Town Hall, so people can contact a clerk and reserve a seat if they wish to speak. If we fill up and, you know, well, I guess, well, people can wait outside or in their cars, and we can contact them when it's their turn. So we'll, we'll do our best to, to manage it. I don't, you know, think there's anything controversial, though you never know. There are some public hearings too. All right. Any questions before we start about the format of the meeting, the hybrid format? It worked, it worked pretty well last time. I think we'll get better at it as, as we progress. But the public can now attend if they, if they wish. All right, so let's go then to the agenda. So as I mentioned, there's some public hearings. The first one is on the acquisition of lands of Schmidt in Neuyak and amending the CPF Management Institute Plan to include that property. The second one is to consider repealing Town Code Section 33248-Q RTW Residential Plan Development District in its entirety and amending the zoning map to revert two corresponding parcels to their prior zoning classification of highway business in Hampton Bay. So let me just say what that one is. The board should be somewhat familiar with this because we've extended this PDD. This was like a senior citizen type of residential development in Hampton Bay. I want to say on the north side of the highway, this is the one where there was requirement that they install a bus stop, if that may refresh your memory, and there is no bus running in that area. And I think there was some affordable units on it. It was, it's an old PDD that didn't get built, and now they want to actually go back to pre-PDD status. It was highway business. Once we did the PDD, that became the zoning for this property. It has no other zoning other than PDD. So it's not automatic that if you end the PDD, it reverts. I don't really know how that works. That's a good question for maybe Mr. Burke, who's now part of the call or the meeting. But, you know, I guess that would be the default, that it would go back to what it had been. I think highway business is the zoning that's around it. We'll get all these details when we get to the actual public hearing. But apparently, the current owner isn't interested in the PDD, so would like to have the old zoning back. So we'll, we'll, we'll be hearing the arguments. Jim, did you want to add anything to that?
Just, just, we, just to confirm, there was a question about whether it was a complete default, that it just defaulted back. That's why we're having this resolution for the board to actually act on it to just create the, to, to deform the zoning, to the highway business zoning.
So it's not clear whether it would default once the.
The code says, I haven't looked at it real recently, but the code says that it terminates if a certain action doesn't happen. So it's a little bit unclear as whether it would just go back to the original or what would happen essentially. So we figured it would be easier or clearer to, to actually have the town board take an action here, and it just, just clarifies the record essentially.
Okay.
Jim, if they decide after it goes back to HB, if that's what it's going to be, for a couple of years, can they, and nothing happens, and they decide they want the PDD back, can they do that?
Well, yes, certainly somebody can, you know, they're entitled to make an application for a change.
No, there is no PDD law anymore, Jim. They can't go back.
All right, that's true, right. For the PDD, they couldn't.
Even though with the underlying zoning, after the PDD law was, you know, gotten rid of?
No, once, once it's terminated, it's terminated.
Okay, got it.
It's supposed to be PDD, right. Any other zoning category that's still existing, they certainly can make an application for, but no, the PDD is out, for sure.
Thank you.
But they could apply for something else, multifamily, SC44, whatever it is, they could. There is actually very similar zoning today to the PDD zoning that was given on this property. I think it's SC44 is, is pretty similar. So they could apply, they could apply for that. There are some locational standards, so I'm not sure it could go on that property, but that's, that's a possibility.
FYI, if some, I don't know if they know this, I didn't tell you, I just texted them. This one should.
We have, I think it's, Janice has an open unmuted phone line, so.
She's standing next to Jim.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
So let's, let's continue on. Okay. All right, let's, let's go to resolutions. The first one is 578 of 2020. Why do I feel like we did this? Yeah, we did do this.
We did do this. You had a special meeting on this, yes, last, last time, so that one.
Because you already had this resolution on this agenda, and then you had a meeting, we couldn't.
We tabled it, and then we took care of it through a separate resolution.
You have to withdraw it, since it's already on the agenda.
So I have to leave it there and just withdraw it on the floor? Why, no, why can't, oh, I.
Yeah, no, because once it actually has a resolution number assigned to it, it becomes part of the, the actual agenda.
And it was tabled, it was, it was tabled to the upcoming meeting, right?
Correct, and then you called a special meeting because there was some sort of change and you needed, there was some.
But I'll, I'll withdraw that on the floor, 578, at the next meeting. All right, Rick, you've got the next one.
Yeah, Town Board Resolution 34378, 2020, reject bids for mobile ice cream truck concessions for W. Scott Cameron Beach.
Town Board Resolution ID 34371, authorize contract with Nursing Services Home Care DBA Catholic Home Care to provide expanded in-home services for the elderly program, EISCP, to Town of Southampton residents.
I just, just one quick correction, it's like, Services, Nursing Sisters.
I'm sorry, you, I didn't hear you.
That's what I have. Contact with Nursing.
You're breaking up.
Is it Sister or Sisters?
We lost Jay, he's frozen, there.
That was his question, I think, because throughout the resolution, it says Sister, not Sisters, so.
I'll double-check that.
Okay, thank you, and then we'll just make that change.
Okay, Town Board Resolution 34391, authorize the purchase of Eber Beaver 1821, Rush Chipper from Moorbark LLC using the Sourcewell contract.
We seem to have lost the supervisor, so I'll just read that agreement. Shall we move forward here? Jay, we can't hear you.
Yeah, I think you can read the agendas.
All right, this is Town Board Resolution ID.
Can anybody hear?
Yeah, now we can. There you are, get back.
Hey, you there?
Back, all right, all right, so 34368, authorize supervisor to sign license agreement with all the East End for use of a room at the Bridgehampton Community Center for its Feed the Need Campaign.
Town Board Resolution ID 34326, co-sponsored with Councilwoman Laustad to authorize supervisor to sign to satisfaction of mortgage on community development to block grant loans.
34323, authorize the purchase of eight Ford Utility Police Interceptor, eight all-wheel-drive vehicles from New York State OGS contract with John Vance Motors Inc.
Town Board Resolution ID 34394, authorize the supervisor to execute an intermunicipal agreement, INA, with the Town of Islip for acceptance of the town's combing of containers through its recycling program.
Can we just stop for one second? And I, I think this is great in terms of, you know, the price is much better than it had been. You know, we were paying more than that to get rid of our recyclables, but this is still $60 a ton, right? And, you know, we used to either get paid or at least break even on our recyclables, and as we, you know, Len and I are working on the budget for next year, you know, and the subsidy for this recycling program is very high at this point. And, you know, we really need to talk at some point with the board of, it's responsible for us to take all, everybody's recycling for free when it's costing us $60 a ton to get rid of it.
Well, what I'm suggesting is that we have a work session with Christine Fettin, our town engineer, to go through that. She's pulled up the, and I'm sure she's working with Len, pulled up the financials on how to do that. It's a, it's a broader question. You and I have talked about this quite a lot. It may require sort of an East End shared system, or there's a lot of key parts to this. So I agree with you, I think it should be discussed. We may kick that off as a work session with the Town Board to, you know, to fill, fill the board in on to some of the issues. I think we're all pretty much aware of some of these issues, but do they cost one? And what, Christine can help us, you know, figure out what the options might be.
You know, it's, it's not going to solve all of our financial problems, but, you know, we are, we are subsidizing this cost. There might be an easy way to do it, you know, where.
Well, Christine Fettin, you know, at this price, did quite a job to even gain this over, you know, a one-year to two-year extension on the contract. He gives us time.
Yeah, and I say we should move forward on this resolution, but I'm just thinking for next year, we may, when we do the budget, you know, we may have to charge a small fee, maybe just a one, a one-time, you know, once-per-year fee that allows people to come in with, you know, unlimited amounts of recyclable material. Right now, they can do that for free, but maybe, you know, you'll need something, you know, to, you know, a permit to bring us all of your residential recycling material. Doesn't that.
Yeah, there's a lot of options that the, the committee has looked at, and I think we could bring those forward to, to do exactly that, Jim.
I'd like to hear those options. I think it's appropriate for a town to subsidize recycling. That's just, you know, my two cents in this meeting right now.
Oh yeah, the question is that what, what, how far do we want to go in subsidizing it? Right, with lots of things that we subsidize, lots of, you know, we subsidize public transportation, we subsidize healthcare, we subsidize lots of things, but, you know, we used, we used to make money on, on this material, and, you know, the problem is, not everybody uses our recycling centers. Most residents don't. Most residents don't, ninety percent of them don't, and they are paying for the ten percent that do.
Well, it, it's a little more than that, but, uh, you know, as I said, the work session, you can go through the numbers. I, I do agree with Tommy John in that sense that, you know, the, uh, what that means dollar-wise is, is important. Um, but, uh, I, I think that is a responsibility the town has, but I don't know it until we go through that, until we know what the other options are. We're responding to a national issue, actually a global issue. I think we're all aware of that, that recycling is, is, uh, you know, typically the money, uh, that Carter's made and companies made was, uh, in the reuse of the recycled materials. That does not seem to be the case. And there's also the issue with, with, uh, manufacturers of packaging. Uh, it's a big lobby and, um, you know, there's a lot of pressure that's, that's being put on them and vice versa, uh, you know, to continue this. So it, it's a very broad subject, a much bigger subject. What, what it does to us locally here, I think, is something that we should hear directly from municipal works so that we have some, we have something to act.
You know, I, I.
I think that we, go ahead.
I was gonna say, at that price per ton, sixty dollars per ton, I'm not sure this material's even going to get recycled. It might end up in a landfill somewhere. That's a lot of money we're paying just to get rid of it.
Well, it did, it, what happens is that sometimes people just put their stuff into green bags that is recyclable. Um, and that's part of the problem too. The stuff that goes into the commingled containers actually goes to recycling facilities. So, um, but what happened there is really kind of the issue. And what people throw into those, those containers sometimes hasn't, you know, that, there are some areas to control that as well. It's a much broader subject. I don't, I don't know if you.
No, I, all I'm saying is I want to have the conversation in, you know, as Len and I work on the budget for next year, we have a lot of challenges. There's no question. There are a lot of challenges for next year. Uh, mostly resulting from this COVID nineteen pandemic. And we're trying to figure out how we're going to close some of these holes. And, you know, that's an area where, you know, the, the recycling program and the solid waste program used to be self-sustaining. It would, it, you know, it brought in enough revenues to run itself. Today, it, we have to, you know, move a million dollars into that program to close.
Well, I, I know Julie Lobstad wants to speak, but I just should say that this problem, you know, is, is exacerbated by the COVID. But we've been experiencing this now for the last several years. So, uh, you know, it, it, it lays itself bare during this crisis, but this is something that started before this crisis emerged.
Okay.
And just my, my point was, I would hate to dissuade people from recycling. It's taken a long time to get people to recycle. And I understand the money issues, but I think that we need to come up with some way that people aren't going to say, oh, forget it. I'm just never going to recycle again. I don't think we want that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not thinking of like a bag where you have to put your recyclables in a bag like you do your non-recyclables. Just like a yearly permit, it could be relatively inexpensive permit that allows you to, to use our recycling facility. Uh, you know, it's not going to get close to covering the cost of getting rid of those recyclables, I could tell you that. But, uh, it might, you know, might, might do something, so.
I, I, I think there are areas of efficiency that we can look at. As I said, I think, uh, it definitely warrants a, 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 a work session to sit down and, and look at some of those and so, some other discussion. Uh, you know, there's the efficiency, but also then there's the cost that trickle down to us. We're not alone in this. Every municipality is going through this, this issue. So I just make those points.
Well, we've, we've adjusted our green bag prices to deal with the rising cost of garbage. We have not adjusted recycling and we've kept it free. And, uh, it's no longer free for us. It's actually very expensive. So it's just something we'll have to talk about. And then ultimately, it's a board decision. I just have to balance the budget, um, and try to keep property taxes down. And that's something, I know that's a goal of all of us. So, you know, I, all I can do is present you some choices as to how we do it. And, uh, and then it'd be, you know, it's my, my tentative budget and your final budget. So, you know, you can change things, but, uh, it is something that Len and I are looking at. And, uh, we, at the end of the day, it might not be in the proposed budget, uh, or it might be, but, uh.
Well, Jay, um, if I could say what the, uh, with the change in the assessed valuation, the way we capped it, the budget is going to be really challenging. Everybody should know that. Uh, the, the tax cap is lower, so, and our expenses are higher. So we're going to be really scratching our heads to find ways to balance this budget. And it's going to have to probably be with a combination of additional user fees for different items, whatever that is.
When you say that the change in the assessment formula, so what we're talking about is the board agreed to a two-year freeze on, uh, adjusting anybody's property values based on market trends. So, and it actually turned out that this was a big year for increased valuation. If you've been following in the news out in the Hamptons, it's just, uh, things are going through the roof. So we're not capturing that in terms of the growth of our assessment base. Uh, we're locked in, and most of that growth is in high-end properties. Um, you know, the, the stuff that was worth a lot of money before the pandemic went, went up by the most again. So, but we said we would hold things right where they are. Um, the only changes people will see in their taxes will be if they added to their properties. You know, they built something or, you know, we found, uh, a structure that they built that they hadn't, you know, they weren't being taxed on.
Yeah, Jay, that only amounts to like ninety points, ninety basis points.
No, I know. It's less than one percent. So, you, but other, other than that, and then whatever we do with the tax rate. So if the tax rate goes up by two percent, what they pay for town services will go up by two percent. Uh, you know, we've benefited in the past by, um, those market trends going up and up and up. And, uh, it allowed us to move the tax rate lower to offset it. This year, you know, it's hard to, you know, it's likely the tax rate will have to go up a little bit, um, to deal with all the COVID nineteen costs and loss of other revenues and concerns about state and county revenues coming our way. Um, it's going to be a, a more challenging budget than we've seen in the past. But, uh, you know, you know, I believe certainly we'll stay within the governor's tax cap. So, uh, that means the amount of money we collect in taxes will not go up by more than, you know, a couple percentage points, right, Len? What's the cap?
Uh, they still haven't issued the, uh, cap for December thirty-first fiscal years. Um, the last cap, which was for March thirty-first fiscal years, was at, uh, one point eight percent. So I don't think we're going to be more than that. I, I think it's actually going to be lower.
Okay.
But that makes it even harder to bring in revenue.
You know, just as an aside as well, that during the pandemic, we've had, um, I need to confirm this with Christine, uh, certainly an increase in volume, both in recyclables and regular garbage. Um, it, it, to quite an extent, as I understand it. Uh, if that's not the case, then my argument might, might not hold water. But these, uh, could, could these be considered as reimbursable expenses as a result of COVID, um, that we expect to get?
I don't know. I don't think so. Household trash is household trash. We had a lot more because we've had a lot more people out here.
Yeah, but that's a result of the pandemic. I'm wondering if that's.
Well, yeah, you know, there's other year in community, I mean, no, I, I, I wouldn't put it on a claim.
Here, it's, it's quite a difference.
I, yeah, I wouldn't put that on a claim.
Yeah, I mean, if our, the amount of recyclable materials coming in to us is a lot higher, that's going to create an even larger burden on, uh, the town taxpayer.
Yeah, it's not, Jay, it's, it's not uncommon for communities to have a, um, a waste permit fee in order to use the facility. So, you know, it's, it's pretty common, all around New York and New England, that, that you have a, a transfer station permit that's issued to the residents, and that's a fee, whatever you determine.
Right. Now, some towns don't have the green bags. I know like East Hampton, you pay a one-time fee and you can bring in all the garbage you generate. Um, I don't actually like that program because it doesn't, uh, foster, um, recycling or, you know, reductions in waste, because it's, you, you pay your fee and you're done. Uh, but I could see us having the green bag program, so you're paying for what you produce. Pay, pay as you throw, and then, uh, and then having a small fee to use the recycling portion. Um, so it's something sticker that goes on your car and you can recycle all you want for that small fee. But at least it will help offset the fact that our recyclables have gone, gotten so expensive. We went from cash positive to a cash, significant cash negative situation there. All right, uh, so that was, uh, three four three nine four. So the next one is three four three two eight, authorize the supervisor to enter into an agreement with, uh, A. Martin Petrovic, Professor Horticulture, to review the twenty twenty groundwater monitoring reports of the Sabonic Golf Course. Three four three two seven, authorize the supervisor to institute an agreement with, uh, A. Martin Petrovic, Professor Horticulture, to review the twenty twenty groundwater monitoring reports, annual superintendent's report, and management of the golf, the Bridge Golf Course. Three four three eight five, authorize the supervisor to execute a twenty twenty service and maintenance agreement with best climate control for the HVAC system located at the town's main police headquarters building.
Town Board Resolution three four three seven zero, authorize the supervisor to execute a contract with Suffolk County Office for the Aging for Expanded In-Home Services for the Elderly, E I S C P.
Three four three seven two, authorize us to supervise that execute a sole source agreement with CI Technologies, Inc. for IA Pro and Blue Team, Blue Team Software for the use in, for use in the town's police department.
Town Board Resolution three four three seven seven, authorize the supervisor to execute an amendment with Jackson Dodds for invasive vegetative removal on town properties. Um, okay, Town Board Resolution, uh, three four three nine six, authorize the supervisor to sign a twenty twenty contract in support of the trustees and freeholders of the Commonality of the Town of East Hampton for Water Quality Protection Strategies. Um, and a word on this, this is a program through the Harbor Committee of the Village of Sag Harbor. This is, uh, in, an intermunicipal operation to test the waters of Sag Harbor. I'm asking the board to support two thousand dollars for the final year of a three-year study, uh, for, uh, variety of bacterias in, uh, Sag Harbor. There are municipal challenges there. Uh, the Village of Sag Harbor is putting monies up, uh, to this as is, as are the trustees of East Hampton and I believe the trustees of Southampton. And, uh, this is a, a three-year study, and I believe that study is valuable to compare in the future and to use, um, uh, currently as well. I know the Village of Sag Harbor is looking to mitigate nitrogen in, uh, a, a variety of, of possibilities, including, uh, possibly expanding their sewer district, and this is a key component. Uh, we were looking for the state to, to hopefully get grants, uh, uh, from, uh, such studies and mitigating nitrogen in that area. Um, but the world has turned sideways, as we know. And, uh, so I think having this information is beneficial to us, and I would ask the board to support it.
Town Board Resolution ID three four three nine three, uh, co-sponsored with Councilman Sivoni, to recall and amend Resolution two nineteen dash one one seven one, oils with the pits and roots. Town Board Resolution three four three nine zero, to recall and amend Town Board Resolution twenty twenty dash five oh two, to sign a contract with PW Grocer for evaluation of existing LiTate pump station and tuberages.
Town Board Resolution three four three five nine, recall and amend, uh, Town Board Resolution twenty twenty dash five forty-one, with Contemporary Computer Services Incorporated for additional support. Town Board Resolution three four three six nine, recall and amend Town Board Resolution twenty twenty dash five five six, no before for the Information Technology Department.
Town Board Resolution three four three eight one, resolution authorizing the parks directed to enter into an interim concession agreement for mobile food trucks pursuant to Town Code, Chapter one 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 dash seven B two for twenty twenty, summer season at Me Cox Beach.
Uh, three four three one two, twenty twenty, notice the bidders for North Sea Beach Colony Beach Erosion Control District Nourishment.
I have some language that needs to be inserted into the resolution in regards to, um, the opening, the bid opening, which was, um, not included.
You want to tell me what that is before we, uh?
Yes, I could read it. It's just a, a sentence, basically, that would be inserted near the, uh, top under notice of bidders. After the take notice, it would say, take further notice that due to the public health and safety concerns related to COVID nineteen, the bid opening will be opened and read aloud on camera at two thirty PM the day the bid is due. Results will be posted in our online bid and RFP system. Please use the following link to view the opening and provide the link. This is how we've been doing it, uh, since we, we reinstated bid openings. I consulted with our town attorney, and he said it is fine to continue in this manner. Currently, we don't have, um, the space to be able to accommodate openings, especially in my office. I'm only allowed two people at a time, and the appointments take up that, that space. So, um, we have received no complaints about this system. I think they actually probably appreciate the fact that they can get it live openings from their offices and take, get the information that they usually travel the town hall to get. So we're going to continue that, um, for the time being.
Thank you, Sandy. The only other thing I'll note that, you know, the creation of this, uh, erosion control district wasn't a unanimous board decision, so those, uh, any members who, uh, you know, didn't support that, it's up to them to decide whether they want to support the notice to bidders and the ultimate warning of bid for that project. Um, next one is three four three six two, amends twenty twenty adopted budget for Bay Constable Part-Time Salaries. Uh, three four three eight eight, amends the twenty twenty adopted budget for beach part-time salaries. Thirty four three ninety-two, authorizes highway fund pay-as-you-go for purchase of equipment. Thirty four three sixty-six, authorizes town attorney to pay deductible to NYMER for paid claims. John, you're next.
Town Board Resolution ID three four three nine five, to accept, uh, beach trash baskets donation from Aidan Kravitz. And I got a call from Councilman, uh, Martell, who wanted to co-sponsor this. Um, and I welcome that. Thank you. Town Board Resolution ID three four three five eight, for, uh, releasing maintenance bond in connection with site plan of Hampton-based District Four, two hundred riders way in West Hampton. Town Board Resolution ID three four three five seven, release maintenance bond in connection with the site plan of Gucile Properties for LLC and Spion.
Three four two two four, accepts retirement of Diane Van Sickle, Principal Assessment Clerk in the Tax Receiver's Office. Thirty four three sixty-three, appoints Ron Carter, Jr. to Senior Court Officer position. Thirty four three sixty-five, appoint Senior Office Assistant Position in Public Safety.
Hey, if I could just say one thing on this resolution, because this person is being moved from my office, and yesterday was the first day that I found out about this. Um, person, the individual who's being moved is a wonderful employee. It has been since she first arrived in our office. And, and we are hap, you know, I'm happy supporting her, her moving, and I understand the reasons why. Um, and they're all very valid because, and a lot of it has to do with traffic. Um, but I do have to say the timing is really poor for us. I understand this move is being made, but we're in full season right now, and this individual oversees a special event process in my office. And I just can't tell you that August first couldn't be a worse time for us. September first would have been really considerate, honestly, but, you know, I'm, it's going to be a challenge for us to have this position. It'll be weeks before we're able to refill it, and I just want to bring that to your attention because, you know, we already have our own challenges with it.
Right.
But just putting it out there because it's, it's.
We can have that conversation about what, you know. We can have that conversation about what, you know, how we're gonna manage through that. It's obviously, the position was, uh, open, and this person applied, and it turned out to be.
No, I, I'm completely supportive of that. I'm just talking about the time.
No, I understand, it's gonna create a problem for you. I mean, that, you know, if there's a way to, you know, delay it, I don't know if there is.
It would be nice to have the conversation, if it's possible.
Yeah, I, I'd like to.
Well, it's a problem for code, it's a problem for code too, Jay. I mean, they have all kinds of tent permits and whatever. They're, uh, having same, similar administrative nightmare down there, so.
They just move it from one office to the other, you know, but it's.
Well, I, it's.
Hampton, that it affects as a whole. And the, those applications come in to us for the fire marshal's office. It's just, it is what it is, and I understand it. But if I had had, you know, some idea, you know, running through the system to replace a staff person, you know, as a fire marshal, it's, they've been vacant since April 30th. You know, if I stay right now, it's the height of the season, that's all, you know.
You see, plus, Sunday, are there less special event permits this year?
Please, Ryan Murphy wants to weigh in on this, and he needs to be unmuted, Charles. And then, uh, I have something to add too, at the end of that.
Hey, hey, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
All right, Sunday, uh, I, I completely understand and, and sympathize. Well, I'm, I, I can speak for myself. I'm willing to, to do whatever we need to do to make this less impactful on your office. I, I understand the value there and, and the fact that you're in the height of your season. So, I'll, I, I'm happy to talk to you offline and see whatever we can do to try and minimize the negative impact of this.
Thank you, Ryan. You know, we've been working really well together.
Without a doubt, you and I have been working together on a ton of stuff, and whatever I can do to not have this be a, a real problem for your office, you know, we'll, we'll work something out.
Okay, great, I look forward to that conversation. Thank you very much.
To that end, I know Sunday and I also spoke, and Brian, uh, maybe we could get on the phone afterwards if we have some possible ideas on how to prevent that from, from becoming a problem in the future.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm open to, to anything. We can certainly have that conversation.
Great, thank you, Ryan.
All right, thanks, and I appreciate the, you know, the teamwork on all sides. All right, let's, uh, continue on. That was, uh, three, four, three, six, five. Three, four, three, three, eight. Notice of public hearing on the acquisition of interest in lands of Conic Land Trust as contract vendee, Eastport, and amend CPF management and stewardship plan to include, uh, the property. Three, four, three, four, one. Notice of public hearing on the acquisition of lands of Bauer and Forest Park LLC in Sagaponic. Amend to CPF management and stewardship plan to include property. Three, four, three, five, four. Notice of public hearing on the acquisition of lands of Tusa in North Sea, and amends the CPF management and stewardship plan. Three, four, three, three, one. Notice of public hearing on the acquisition of lands of Whites East Quag, and amend CPF management and stewardship plan to include that property. All right, um, that's it for the main packet. Full up with changes. There are two add-ons, John. Number three, four, three, seven, four. I'll just read it. Notice of public hearing to consider the lease of the property located at 112 Old Riverhead Road, West Hampton Beach, for the purposes of a community center. Uh, and, uh, we, we can talk about what that is. Three, four, four, zero, one. Recalls and amends Resolution 2020-254. Let me just see what that is, 2020-254. Yeah, I'm sorry, five, two, four. It's a minor amendment, uh, correction. And not to exceed, I guess. Of course, not to exceed, uh, the 22,348.60. The other resolution, um, three, four, three, seven, four, would allow for a public hearing on the possible creation of a, uh, community center, senior center in the West Hampton area, which the town board has been looking at for a very long time. We, you know, we have the centers in Bridge Hampton, and we have in Hampton Bay's, and we have in Flanders, but the western portion of town is underserved. And, uh, you know, Councilman Bouvier has been working very hard to, to, uh, address that growing need there. John, do you want to say anything about this?
Uh, no, well, uh, you, you said it, you already said it. But I did want to add, uh, Councilman, uh, Rick Martell wanted to be on, uh, co-sponsor. And I would welcome any other members of the town board who wish to, uh, sign on as co-sponsors onto this. I think it's an important issue, the town, the western part of town without a community center for a long time. I know Sunday has worked on this issue. There's been a whole host of people who are trying to get this done. And, uh, I know Supervisor, you've worked tirelessly with us to, uh, to get a lease that makes sense and an option to purchase this property. It's situated in the right place, so there, the east end members are very excited. I'm sorry, the west end members are very excited about this building and the possibility of this, uh, coming about. So I, I look forward to the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, John. And that hearing is, would be scheduled for August 11th at 1:00 PM.
That's correct. And Sunday, if you could add Rick Martell and any other.
Absolutely, already done.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Rick.
All right, thank you, thank you, John and Rick, for your work. All right, um, so, any other changes to the agenda? Is everybody okay with the agenda for the July 14th meeting? All right, so Sunday, you want to go ahead and put it together?
Certainly.
All right. So let me get back to, so the only thing we have left on the agenda is executive session. I have, uh, executive session on personnel and confidential legal advice. So, uh, is there any other matters for exec session?
Well, I, I had one, um, that's, that's legal advice as well.
Okay, then it's already covered on the confidential legal advice.
Yes.
All right, so I'll make a motion to end our work session and go into executive session on those items, and that'll be via a, a telephone call. And you all have been provided with the call-in number and password, so. All right, so I'll make a motion to end and go on the executive session. Is there a second?
Okay.
By Councilman Sivoni, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you all.